Okay, I've got four thirty and I think we've got quorum, so I think we should start. So, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the committee, the whole meeting, February the first, two thousand and twenty one. First thing is call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the district to fit Tino operates within the territory of the Talokut First Nation. I also like to know to attendees that the meeting is being video recorded and will be published on the district to Tino's YouTube channel. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Moved it up.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can, uh, how can I get a motion to adopt the minutes? The committee, the whole meeting held December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty.
I'll move adoption of those.
Seconded by grit. All those in favor? Non-opposed, motion is carried. At least, do we have any public comments on agenda items?
Through the mayor, no, no one has signed up for public comment.
And we have no delegations and no correspondence. So we'll move on to item seven point one, the water and sewer utility rate review. Presentation from Infrastructure and Public Works, Financial Services and Consultant.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Fraser Work. I'm the Director of Infrastructure and Public Works. And today I'll kick off this item in the agenda, which will be a three-part presentation by myself. A consultant advisor JP Jolly from Waterworth, who's just popped up on the screen. And the presentation will be finalized by a section of slides by the CFO, Nyla Tiana. Today is a verbal presentation with slides that will review and discuss with council. Some considerations as regards to operating budget mainly and an outlook and and some headline updates on the water utility in general. I'll start with a presentation, which will just provide a brief overview on the considerations around operating and capital. JP will then walk through some of the modeling and the considerations with respect to financial outlooks as as they can be represented by visual models. And then Nyla will finalize the discussion with a more in-depth look at the rate structure and some of the considerations for the two thousand and twenty one financial plan. With that, I'll transition to sharing my slides and 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 then I'll, at the end of my slides, I'll, I'll basically have one slide empty to segue into JP's presentation. Who then share his screen and we'll go from there. More than happy to be interrupted at any time by council as they so wish. And and I'll just bring my screen up now and we'll get going. Of course, it's not showing me. All right. Sorry, it's just not, oh, there we go. It was, I had to scroll down. There, sorry about that delay. If council can see all that. I got a nod, a thumbs up, so I'll carry on here. So as discussed, I'll, I'll go through the operating and capital budgets, highlights for two thousand and twenty one and some outlook for future years. Discuss a little bit of the risks and mitigations and mainly focus on what are considered the driving pressures or financial pressures on operating this year. With that direct link to the the rate review that Nyla will discuss at the end. So in summary for council, operating budget is.
Excuse me, Fraser, can I just interrupt for a second? You put a slideshow view, please.
Of course.
We get full screen.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
My apologies. So the first slide is just a really overview, high-level overview on what constitutes operating costs for the district. And and revenues. So it's made up of our our financial revenue sources from from the rates, has salaries for the applicable staff wages. Maintenance repairs, which can often be different, daily operations, costs and costs for forward-looking planning and annual planning. Including monitoring and evaluation of the system with both consultant support as well as equipment and systems. If we compare the the financial plan, which you'll see next week in more detail. We're starting to look at some of the pressures with respect to additional funds required to support training and certification, especially of those new. Operators that support the running of the utility on a daily basis and the wages associated with the new utility one position. Some incremental changes in maintenance across all of the different infrastructure sites and types. So when we've looked through the budget in two thousand and twenty and we've applied it to two thousand and twenty one. We realized in many areas that we were short on the required maintenance dollars in order to just provide the bare minimum maintenance required. To keep the system working adequately and safely across the utility. We have numbers of of locations for more sort of dense infrastructure, like the wastewater treatment or the waste, sorry, water treatment plants. And also, of course, across all of our valves and different systems that are in the ground. We're also seeing an upswing in our controls and monitoring system, both on the software and the hardware side, which allows us to remote monitor, control the water utility. From the office here as well as from laptop and and tablet to open, close, configure and manage the different devices in the field. We have water treatment plant maintenance backlog. So in addition to the incremental maintenance pressures. We have a backlog of maintenance, especially at Okmasas, which which has a critical maintenance total of of around. Thirty thousand dollars for us to get back on track. And then we're looking at more of our future planning and in future years. So we have a spike essentially in our operating to get back on track with our maintenance at that location. We have a some increases across contractors and material to support just normal replacements and maintenance. And we also have to start planning for some meter replacements, especially for large users, which can cost over and above fifteen thousand dollars per unit. And when we look at some of the meters that we have in the ground, which are quite old and potentially inaccurate. Some of those replacement costs are higher than than we've seen in previous years, and in some cases coming due for the first time in a generation. The water capital outlook is a conservative plan for two thousand and twenty one. Which with with the continued focus on the UV or ultraviolet upgrades at the Bay Street location of which council is aware. And of and which we've also applied for a grant, which would cover up to a hundred percent of of that project, which is currently valued at about one point five million. Once we go past that project, which is a significant project, we're also looking at designing two water main upgrades to replace old asbestos cement mains. With more resilient modern infrastructure that will last past the intended thirty-five-year lifespan of those mains that are throughout the downtown core installed in the eighties. We have a series of those upgrades that are that are to be done in the future and a series that have been undertaken in the last several years. So those continue as almost a normal rhythm for us on our ongoing renewal program. We also have to introduce some chlorination systems at DL one-one-seven, which we're planning for this year, which can allow us to add chlorine. Partway through the system so that when water is stored there for significant periods of time and when we need it, that we can get rechlorinated before entering into the mains. And we also have a requirement for adding more flow and sensors on Mears Island to make sure that we have remote telemetry. Or remote monitoring capability for those systems from here on the peninsula. So that we can understand if there's a problem, a fault, or how the flows are behaving, so that we're safer and more agile with respect to responding to any issues. Beyond two thousand and twenty one, our capital program takes this type of a shape. With general sort of bigger handful type of wording used in this slide. So we have water main renewals, which continue as I've just indicated. We are also looking at the requirement for an emergency generator power backup for Okmasas, which currently has no backup power capability. We are looking at more significant repairs at number one creek. And also at Close Creek, which have older infrastructure in some cases that is nearing the end of its life or requires to be upgraded based on. In some cases, the the temporary repairs that were put in place years ago. The Bay Street tank replacement is also another fairly large sticker-priced item that would have to be done in the next several years as it's now passing its end-of-life, intended useful life lifespan. And and something which may have cost about thirty-five thousand dollars in nineteen eighty-five now costs upwards of a million dollars in two thousand and twenty one. So just for this, for a like-for-like replacement, that's the type of increases we've seen over a generation of infrastructure costs. In two thousand and twenty-five and beyond, we're looking at continuing on with renewals programs. And then we have some fairly big ticket items on the horizon, which we're starting to plan for now as part of our initial capital renewal and replacement plans. And and we're inputting those into the models that that JP will show you shortly. But those include big items like reservoir expansion, potentially repairs and replacements of of some of our reservoirs or tanks. Increase additional of water filtration capability at Bay Street, which we currently don't have. And based on where we get to in the next couple of years, the the health authority might agree that that is a definite requirement. Sharp road dam renewal, seabed pipeline, Love Can Tank, end-of-life action and and then looking at the future water source. And and while that that right column of the slide is is meant as a general overview. A lot of which is yet to be really formalized and detailed and comprehensive planning. Is a bit of a taster for what's to come in the next generation of water utility improvements or replacements. And those are significant items, significant for any community and especially for for one of our size. The plan is over two thousand and twenty-one is to really dig in here on the planning around these items to understand. What risks we're carrying based on current condition, end of life. And when these need to be programmed into the timeline and whether or not we can delay on some of these so that we can actually. Remove expenditures and push them to the right in the calendar. The 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 costs of these will be dictated through more detailed design work, but they won't be insignificant. So in two thousand and twenty-one, the the plan is really to plan. And to come up with a very supportable, defensible investment strategy for years to come. So that we can, we can get our ducks in a row, both financially and resource-wise, and make sure that we we have a a strong. And and sound plan that that we can afford over time. When I, when I turn that into a bit of different language to articulate those risks, not just financial risks. But we are carrying levels of service risk with respect to aging infrastructure. We 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 often talk at this venue with council about our capacity issues and development pressures. And also sometimes about what capacity we have remaining for fire flows. And all of which is on the slide is up for for discussion and analysis in two thousand and twenty-one as part of our master planning and asset management planning. That's recommended in the financial plan that you'll see next week. We continue to incur additional costs to control and monitor our equipment in a modern infrastructure that requires both remote. And and local controls. We have human resource issues when aging infrastructure requires more maintenance and more care and attention on a daily basis. That obviously pressures our our teams and our ability to deliver fixes during the work, work weeks. Ongoing affordability risks, both material and infrastructure costs, and we also have some uncertainty. And we have those continued pressures of escalation as part of our overall affordability picture. Climate train change adds a couple of different dimensions of risk. Low flow and drought management is one of the main ones that we talk about most frequently. And also the increased storm activity, which can increase damage and has been known to damage water supply sources, piping arrangements and assets on Mears Island. We also want to move towards protecting that watershed and and building its resilience so that it it is here to sustain our water source for generations to come. And that, of course, involves other rights holders and community members as well as the infrastructure itself. The way that that we want to mitigate this in in big handfuls is to really be prepared financially. And that's kind of the flavor of today's discussion. Get access to resources and funding, both internally and externally, and to make sure that whatever we do has high value for money. Adequate resources is always going to be what job one for, in my role, to put the right people in the right seat so that we can get the job done. So it's both a question of skills and horsepower. And we'll be, we have made some changes recently and we'll be looking at that and making sure that we have the right models moving forward. And as council has already heard me say today and before is that two thousand and twenty-one is the year of water planning. To get us to a point where we have a solid and defensible operations and maintenance program, a twenty-to-thirty-year capital planning horizon. A good plan for watershed management, renewed and reinvigorated conservation strategies and and action set. As well as building in more and more resilience into our infrastructure, as well as the the way we manage our our utility. And conservation there on itself is is a really important one to break out as a, not just something that we plan, but something that we deliver as a strategy. So that we reduce the amount of water and stretch how far it goes across the community. So that's a lot of information. And I think what what JP will do. In a, in a second is is really bring that into visual terms so that council can see how that relates to year-on-year financial planning. And then Nyla will be able to talk about specifically the rate structure. But before I jump over to JP and allow him to run us through the model, I did want to give council a heads up that we are discussing internally. And and preparing to bring back some information for council on the current language that's in the bylaw about connection fees. There's a little excerpt there, which is the schedules two to five in the in the bylaw. And what we have in our languages right now is we differ, we don't differentiate between new installations. That weren't previously connected to our infrastructure, as well as upgrades where maybe a a smaller service becomes a bigger service because they've added load on the property. And and in some cases, those incur different costs, or they have to be just managed a little bit differently. And what we want to make sure that is if some developer in previous generation paid to have that property connected to our utility. That we're charging the appropriate fee in future years when they're looking at upgrading the size of that service with the connection already intact. So we're looking at the language also when, as it refers to meter size, which we commonly look at our. Our sizing of our service based on pipe size and meter sizes then matched to the system. And right now we tie everything between meter size and fee rather than the service itself. So so we're reviewing these with the consultant as part of normal kind of operations of our of our water utility works and services agreements and and different land development. And we're looking to arrange the, sorry, to align these more closely between rates and size, as well as the actuals. And the making sure that our our rate structure reflects more accurately the the actuals that we, the costs that we incur. So we may introduce a proposed change for council to consider as we return back with more of a recommended bylaw amendment approach in the coming months. And this is just a highlight for council's consideration that this wouldn't be a surprise when you see it next. That staff is working on some of these things to just sort of avoid confusion. More more so really that right now than to to recover funds, but just to make sure also that our costs are aligned with with actuals. As Nyla will touch on in her presentation, the the considerations that we're going to bring forward for council today and formalize those in the documentation. Will be progressed in more detail by staff in two thousand and twenty-one for future changes. So what we'll look at is is a series of two thousand and twenty-one upgrades and we'll keep our review going. And and we'll look at what we have to do in future years to to sort of eke the system towards the the best match between actuals and and fees. So on that note, I'll, I'll stop on this slide, which is just a segue to JP's side. And I'll escape out of my presentation here, stop sharing and I'll pause in case council has any questions for me on the kind of. Quick run-through of my particular slide deck, which I'll do better next time to get it on slideshow. And and then I'll, and then once happy, I think JP will be ready just to pounce into the presentation.
Are there any questions for Fraser before we move on to JP? Okay, looks like no questions. So it's over to you, JP. Thanks, Fraser.
Okay, thank you. Can, can you hear me all right? Yeah, I'll, I'll assume that that's so, yes. Okay, thanks for inviting me today. So I'm just by way of a brief introduction, I'm a founder and CEO of the company Waterworth. We develop the software that I'm about to show you. Some of you have seen this before. I've been working with Fraser for the past, maybe not quite a year, and with Nyla for many years now. On helping to understand the the kind of the long-term financials around running the water and wastewater utility and and setting of rates. So with that said, I'm going to share my screen. And I'm just going to take a few minutes to break this model down into its pieces, one layer at a time, just to ease you into it. And then if you have any questions, even questions like what if this and what if that? This model is very well-suited to answer those questions because we can change things on the fly and and look at various scenarios. But let's start with the operating expenses layer. So this blue layer here. And I don't know if you can all see these numbers on your screen, but that's not that important. You can see that your expenses going back to two thousand and seventeen were maybe around the six hundred thousand dollar amount. And now they're sort of more closer to a million and kind of rising from there with some assumed inflation in the model. So these are operating and maintenance costs. Layered on top of that, I will add what we would call capital improvements. So this is the replacement of things that you already have that are aging and. And then on on top of that, I'll add another layer called capital expansion-related projects, which would be new things like. You might consider the expansion of your reservoirs as a new infrastructure. It's the same reservoir, you're just adding more to it to expand its capacity. And if I zoom in on those specifically, these are some of the things that were noted in Fraser's. Presentation that were occurring beyond two thousand and twenty-five. So some of these things are, you know, that the the costs of them are still. You know, a best estimate at this point, and Fraser has every intention to dig more deeply into these and and refine, not just the cost, but also the timing of when these things need to happen. Meanwhile, with the best information that we have, we put it in the model and it lets us have a conversation around it. So we have the operating expenses in blue and then these two green layers are your, all your capital costs. And currently, that's really all you have for costs as far as, there's also some debt servicing that is proposed. So let me just jump into that very quickly. So as part of those future capital projects, there is the idea right now in the model, in this particular scenario. To borrow one and a half million in two thousand and twenty-seven and another seven million to help with the the expansions in two thousand and thirty. Again, these are all, you know, can be discussed and debated and moved around and so on. But if you take on these two borrowing amounts, then obviously you have some principal and interest payments to make from that point onward. And that's what this little blue layer here represents. So if you have stack up all those expenses that are in this current model. That's the picture that you get right there. So that's all these layers, one on top of the other, give you an idea of. The kind of cost you're looking at. Okay, so now let's turn on some revenue. So of course, you've got your sale of water service revenues. Those are these. Gold bars here. And of course, they're rising over time because of the rate increases that come from time to time. And Nyla will talk some more about that in a moment. We've got developer contributions. So we've got these in the model as. These are really transfers of funds that you already have locked up in your DCC reserve account. So there, as you know, there's a restricted monies. You can't just use them whenever. So in the modeling here. Nyla has chosen to draw on those funds, I guess, together with Fraser's help and understanding which of those projects would be eligible to use those funds. So here they are coming into the model at certain times. Okay, so we've got. Revenues coming from rates, we've got the developer contributions, we've got these borrowed amounts also coming into the model. We don't have any, well, there's a, I guess there is a bit of a grant here for this year. One and a half million, but no other grants in any of these subsequent years. So if if more grant funding can be found, that's a bonus. And then there's some other operating revenue, which would be things like the transfers from general for the infrastructure levy and the debt service. Payments. And then there's a tiny little amount of non-operating revenue that you can hardly see because it's not that tall. All right. So those are all the monies coming in and we had the monies going out in the background. I'll turn those back on. Okay, so things are starting to come together here. And the whole thing that this model is doing is it's balancing your cash. It's it's giving Nyla an idea as to, you know, what what the bank account is going to look like in the coming years. And the way it looks is like this. So right now, not including the DCC reserves. Remember, those are restricted and they're managed separately outside of this model. But as of the beginning of two thousand and twenty-one, the water utility had about two point eight million dollars of cash. These are surpluses carried over from previous year and other reserves, capital reserves and so on. So this is, this is the total amount of cash. And when this black line goes down, it's because in any given year, there's more spending than new money coming in. And when the line goes up, it's because in those years, there's more money coming in than what you're spending. Pretty, pretty straightforward stuff like any one of our bank accounts that we look at. We're trying to, you know, keep from going broke over the years. And so we have a couple of ways of addressing that. We have something called the operating threshold. So I'll just turn that on. That's a little red dotted line you see at the bottom. And it's set at a hundred thousand dollars and it is set based on some internal reserve policies. One of them is an operating contingency, which is set at five percent of one year's worth of operating expenses. Okay, remember that's this blue layer, so five percent of that blue layer. And also the other policy here, the rate stabilization is set at five percent of the sale of water revenues. Okay, so if you, if you plug these two policies in there, you get this red dotted line, which is telling us. The lowest that you would ever let your cash get to. So here you can see we're pretty far away from there, so not a big deal. Now, on top of these operating reserves, we also have the idea of a capital reserve in the model, and I'll turn that one on. And so right now it's set at a million dollars. And so the idea being that. If if a million dollars is held in a, let's call it an emergency capital reserve fund. That and that money is not used except for actually during an emergency, when you have something go sideways on you, something unplanned. Then having that million dollars stashed away, you know, would help help everybody sleep better at night, knowing that that money's there. So if that is the case, and that's the policy that that is is to be desired. Then this black line is being drawn exactly a million dollars above the red line. And it's giving us a kind of an absolute lowest point now that we'd let the cash get to. So if this cash line ever goes below this dotted line, the black dotted line, then it means that you're drawing into that reserve fund, which is fine if that's what you plan to do. But if you intend to protect that million dollars, then then we must steer this cash position in a way that it stays above the dotted line. Ideally, you kind of want to maybe try to stay as close to the dotted line as you can. But sometimes it's not easy to do to do that if you also want to build up some funds for expensive things that you're going to buy in the future, like these, some of these expensive projects. So this tool lets you balance all of those ideas and decide, you know, the timing of things and when you want to. You know, build up some cash or if you want to use borrowing instead or a combination. And all those things are able to be balanced in this model. The last thing that I'll say is right now the model is, so these these sale of water revenues that you see these gold bars here. They are set based on. For two thousand and twenty-one, there's a, an expected thirteen percent increase to rates that's programmed into the model. And then beyond there, for each subsequent year, it's a four percent increase for the next four years. And then it just drops down to twos. So the takeaway with this is that even despite having these pretty big projects that are coming along. According to the modeling, all of this is achievable with, you know, maybe a little bit higher rate rate increase today. But it's achievable with some fairly steady, low-ish increases along the way. There's there aren't any big surprises in here. There's no big thirty percent increase to rates that we can see. That's going to be needed to support these projects based on the information that we have now. Okay, I'm going to pause as well and see if there's any questions because I just covered a lot of material there. So I'll turn it over and see if anybody wants to ask any questions around that.
Okay, thanks JP. Are there any questions for JP? I'm not hearing any, so I think.
Doc, and I just, I I do have, and it might be difficult, but I do just have one question of of how. How many, there are many factors that. how many, there are many factors that, that can go into the changing in terms of the requirements. And I don't know how they're factored into the model, such as things like conservation, um, growth management. Um, and, and then non, and then other things such as grant funding and, and these variables, are they factored into these kinds of modeling and, and would they in fact then change timelines for, for those larger infrastructure projects where we see those spikes? For example, I, it, I'm not sure if I'm wording it in a way that makes sense to you, but uh, um, there are many factors that would, that will change um, over time. If our conservation efforts work, if we, if we manage our growth interfinal, whether it be the accommodation or residential sector or industrial sector, are those factored into this model?
Um, they're not factored in directly as far, as far as I know right now, uh, but they are certainly factoring in in terms of the conversation. So um, you know, as, as we talk through this and I, and I, and I talked with Fraser about it, for example, um, you know, I'm, I'm encouraging him to think deeply about those very issues so that he can, he can establish the timing of some of these things. So um, so if it was the case that through some, some better conservation me- measures, you could um, you know, do a little bit of engineering math and figure out that, well, you can maybe do without some of those reservoir expansions for another couple of years. Um, Fraser would definitely come in here and he would start pushing some of these projects out into the future a little bit more. So it, it's not like there's a number that we plug into the model that achieves what you're, what you're mentioning, but it's certainly the model helps to have that conversation.
Thank you.
Any more questions for JP? Hearing none. Uh, thanks JP. And I guess we're moving on to Nyla.
Um, to just, can, can I jump in? Was, uh, was I supposed to also show the wastewater model or just the water model today?
I, just the water model today JP. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I think enough bad news for one day's enough.
Okay. Hi. Good evening. I'll just take a moment and, and share my screen when um, JP stops. There we go. Okay. So this portion of the presentation, uh, which has been well introduced by Fraser already is going to focus on our current utility rate structure and talk about um, a couple of stages that we'd like to we'd like to work through our review. And um, so I'll go over the, the current utility rate bylaws and talk about some, some next steps and how we'll achieve some of the objectives that we're looking at through this initial review. So the current rates were adopted in 2015 and um, we did have the benefit of working through that rate review in a lot of detail with JP. So it's really nice to, to have him here throughout this process to do, um, to do this, this review for 2021. Um, there, this would be the first rate review since 2015. We did have a utility rate freeze in 2020 um, during a year when we um, planned to do a rate increase, but we decided to hold rates due to COVID. Um, our current rates we have discovered are not going to meet our 2021 revenue requirements. So we would like to recommend to council a two-stage approach to this rate review where we have a look at the, our revenue requirements in 2021 and then do a more thorough analysis on our rate structure in 2022. I'll talk about that in a bit more detail in a moment. Um, but I just wanted to introduce that concept here at the beginning. We are proposing a rate change, which will be effective April 1st of 2021, which is the beginning of quarter two. So the focus of this first rate change is going to ensure that we meet our revenue requirements. And I think um, Fraser did a great job of explaining the technical aspects to that. Um, I'll go more into the numbers in a moment. And at this time, we aren't looking for, we aren't looking to change our rate classes or our rate structure. We want to carry out that review over the next year and implement a change to our rate structure starting in 2022. And I'll explain why I feel comfortable with, with holding on the rate structure for now and then having a review and we make him come back in the same place in 2022, but taking some time to review it. So we have reviewed our current payment proportions. We've had a look, a look at our fixed fees. We continue to look at connection fees. So we will come back with some recommendations on those. We are currently in discussions with Cloquet regarding an ecosystem service fee. And it's to be determined at this time whether we'll implement that fee in the stage one of our rate review or in stage two. So we'll come back with some recommendations regarding that. The 2022 review is going to focus on the rate structure, including the rate classes. Um, some counselors do remember the 2015 rate refu- review um, where we, previous to that had a significant number of rate classes and it was a very, um, it was a very complicated rate structure. Um, it wasn't easy to explain. So therefore not that transparent to the users of the system. Um, it had a lot of complicated aspects to it. It was a tiered system with as many as, as five tiers within the five different rate classes. So at that time we went to a more simplified rate structure. Um, we'd like to spend um, the next year having a look at that rate structure and ensure that it's still suitable for us. Um, through that review, we'll look at consumption levels. We'll have a look at demand analysis again, which we did in quite a bit of detail back in 2015. And we are getting closer to the time where we need to have a look at and redevelop our sewer utility charges as we get closer to operating the wastewater treatment plant. So I'll take a moment now to go over the current utility rates. Uh, we have three classes in our rate structure, three that are sitting in the, in the water utility and two in the sewer utility. So in the residential class, uh, it refers to a single family dwelling or one duplex or one residence within a strata. It does not include a single service to multiple residences within a strata. Those would remain in the commercial and the other class. In the water utility, we have fire flow classes and that is a fixed charge for metered water service that goes to the property line for fire suppression, should it be required. It's not a consumption charge. It's a, it's a flat fee charge that's based on the service size. I can, I'll show those fees in a moment. So there's no sewer related charge for that. That's just in the water utility. And then we have the commercial and other class, which is any other service that is not considered a fire flow or a residential meter. So those will be purely commercial properties. Um, or they can be mixed use properties where it's commercial on the bottom, residential upstairs or, or vice versa. So the current utility rates look like this in our, in our current utility bylaw for water. I'm not going to go over these in detail, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things. In the residential class, there's a $35 fixed fee charge per quarter. And with that charge, there, the residential customer will receive up to 30 cubic meters of water. Beyond 30 cubic meters of water, there's a per cuber me- cubic meter charge of a dollar 90. And then it goes up after 60 cubic meters. Uh, we chose those, those thresholds back at that time because 60 cubic meters was, was just a little bit above the average residential user consumption. Um, for the commercial and the other class, there is a, a fixed charge as well, which is $40. There's no consumption that goes with that, uh, with that fixed fee. There are consumption charges for all cubic me- cubic meters of water used. It's a different charge from October to March than it is for April to September. So there is still the, the seasonality of rates within that commercial and other class. The fire flow class is a fixed, fixed fee, as I mentioned, and it is based on the service size. So anywhere from three inches to six inches, and that's a fixed fee per quarter. In the sewer utility, the water ra- the sewer rates are 90% of the water rates. They are based on um, 90% of the water rates because the rationale, which is consistent um, to what it is today. Back in 2015, we had a look and consistently 90% approximately of the water is going through the sewer system. Um, so consistent with other municipalities, that was a, a reasonable, reasonable way and rational way to charge the sewer utility. So it is based on cubic meters of water used. However, all the rates are 90% of what is in the water utility. So having gone over the current water charges, I just want to talk about 2020 revenue and what our 2021 requirements are. I'm also going to be providing some statistics on what the 2020 um, you, our revenue look like and proportionate to the consumption charges or to the actual consumption, billable consumption. So in 2020, if council recalls, we budgeted quite conservative, quite conservatively due to COVID. Um, and we budgeted 484,250, um, significantly less than where we would normally budget, which is around 745,000. So we actually ended up collecting where we, um, where we uh, normally wanted to budget for last year. So that is great news. We, in order to minimize the impact to user, we, we froze the rates in 2020. Uh, we ended up making up the consumption in the summer months. So that seasonality charge really worked in our favor last year. We were able to collect all the, all the rev- revenue that we originally budgeted. And we didn't require the 2018 and 19 surpluses that we moved into the operating budget to make up for that difference. So those amounts are going to be moved forward and used for working capital in the 2021 budget. Um, so as council knows, it is in my work plan to review and bring forward or develop and bring forward a reserve fund policy. Uh, these are one of the things that I'm looking at is how to allocate service, surpluses appropriately. Um, we have the capital and infrastructure levy that we do charge on the tax bill for infrastructure, for future renewal of infrastructure. Um, those amounts are transferred to capital reserve funds and, and are quite restricted for the renewal of assets. Um, with the surpluses, we do have the ability to contribute to those reserve funds as well to save for future renewal of those, of assets. Um, but we are finding consistently that we do require those surpluses to bring forward to the following year um, to pay for operating and have available for working capital. So we will be bringing forward um, that policy to council as part of that, the development of the reserve fund policy. Currently our rate structure sits so that we collect 20% of our revenue from our fixed fee component. So that flat fee we charge per quarter and then 80% of our revenue is variable. And we saw in 2020 that um, that was a significant risk to us. Uh, we did see that with the elimination of, of that variable revenue or risk to that variable revenue um, due to lack of consumption, um, could, um, could be um, difficult for us to be able to provide the utility effectively. So we found some ways to minimize and use prior year surpluses, but we, we do need to better prepare for a situation and have a look in that second stage of the rate review on the risk that we're seeing within our rate model. So having a, a closer look at that fixed fee component. So I wanted to take a moment and provide some statistics on the water utility consumption and some um, and how the billing looks. And so I'll break down this table a, a little bit, starting with the residential class. So I've broken it out into the three different classes. Having a look at residential, the proportion of the total revenue collected in 2020 was 34%. Um, so going along that row, we have the majority of our utility accounts are in the residential class at 697. However, the residential class consumes 138, 728 cubic meters, which is 33% of total consumption. So what this table shows us is we haven't, we haven't moved too far away from where we were in 2015. We wanted to ensure that where we were seeing demand, that's where we were collecting the revenues. Um, that was a major component and rationale for, for developing the rates back, um, back in the, in 2015. Um, so similarly in the commercial and the other class, we have 62% of the revenue being collected from that class. The majority of the fire flow classes, with the exception of a couple strata, fire flow meters are being collected from the commercial and other class. So 66% in total between those two classes is being collected from commercial, other and fire flow. And 67% of total billable consumption is coming from those classes. So we are in line and we are meeting demand with revenue collection. Um, the consumption, I just wanted to note that we see on this table have been adjusted for water leaks. So these are only amounts that have been, that have been billed for. So a, a few slides ago, I had indicated that um, I feel comfortable staying with our current rate structure and taking, taking time to review it over the next year and come back to council with some recommendations. And this is why um, we haven't strayed far from our, our original objective and rationale, which is to ensure that we're billing um, based on demand. So as JP touched on a little bit earlier and Fraser also touched on our revenue requirements, um, I would like to provide what we do require in terms of total dollar amounts to meet our operating and capital needs, capital planning requirements in 2021, which is 840,556. So that's an increase of 95,556 over our 2020 actual. This will ensure that we have everything we need to operate the system to meet the technical, technical requirements um, that Fraser mentioned earlier, any deferred maintenance and to continue to plan for adequately for the future. In the 20, um, 2021 budget in the sewer fund, uh, we are um, to meet those operational requirements. We are requiring 90% more in revenue. Um, and we are preparing for a review of the, of the sewer utility um, to ensure that we have the operating requirements that we need to operate the wastewater treatment plant. So over the next year or so, we are going to continue to review what's required in the, in the sewer fund over the neck, over the long term. The 4% increase that JP mentioned earlier and showed in the model will be projected in the model um, for years 2022 to 2025. Uh, in the water fund, it'll also be included in the financial, in the draft financial plan that council will see next week at the, at the budget meetings. And the revenue increases will vary somewhat in the sewer fund because we are having to ensure we have the operating requirements to, to operate the wa- the wastewater treatment plant. So today's discussion is not, is not coming forward with any recommendations for me or from me or, or from Fraser regarding um, implementing the, these rate increases at this time or authorizing staff to, to develop the amendment bylaws to do so. We wanted to have an opportunity to be in front of, of council to introduce um, why, why this is required and introduce what the revenue requirements are. And a more detailed presentation is going to come forward at the um, at the budget meeting on February 11th next week, where Fraser will go into detail on what the, what the budget requirements are in the water and the sewer utility. And it'll line it up with, um, with what's required here on, on this side. So we will be bringing recommendations forward to um, uh, to council to authorize staff to prepare amendment bylaws for a uh, a rate increase starting April 1st of 2021. To ensure that we meet our revenue requirements of 95,556 in the water fund and 86,000 in the sewer fund. We will also have a recommendation that imposes a 4% increase on January 1st of 2022. Um, we won't be amending anything else in, in those, for future years in those bylaws at that time. Um, because we will be having a look at the rate structure and um, having a look at our requirements over the next year. And the amounts in future years may change. And so we, we um, won't be making any, any um, bylaw amendments in future years um, at this time. We would also like to um, have council authorize staff to continue this rate review so we could have a closer look at the utility rate structures. So as previously, previously mentioned, the 2021 water and sewer budgets will bring forward um, those 2018 and 19 surpluses that we didn't need in 2020 to have them available for, um, for working capital. And then the 2020 surplus um, is, is yet to be determined, but we'd like to bring that forward into operating as well and have it unrestricted at this time as we continue to um, have a look at our, at our system requirements. Um, as mentioned, the detailed five-year financial plan for water and sewer will be presented at the February 11th budget meeting, which will be a follow-up to, to today's discussion here. So the next step in our rate review, um, beyond meeting, ensuring that we meet our revenue requirements for 2020, 21 and onwards, uh, we'll have a, continue to look at the ecosystem service fee. Uh, we'll have a look at the fixed fee in the residential, the commercial and other classes um, to ensure that that's, that's where we want to remain with that 2080 split of, of revenue collection. We'll probably have some recommendations come forward regarding that in our, in our 2022 or stage two review. Um, we'll have a look at the flyer, fire flow meter charge, um, ensure that that's where we want to stay with our flat fee charge. And then we may consider it a tiered system or expanding the classes. We will have a look at our, and review our seasonal rates in the commercial class. I wanted to remind council that back in 2015, we did have seasonal rates in all classes, including the residential class. And that was scrutinized by um, by the rate payers in the residential class. They didn't feel as though um, the rates should increase on a seasonal basis. And that's something we took out of, out of the rate structure. So we're not saying we're going to bring that back, but we would have to, like to have a look at the seasonal rates in So we're not saying we're going to bring that back, but we would have to like to have a look at the seasonal rates in the commercial class to ensure they they continue to be suitable. We will review the variable rates among all classes and then and then have a look and do a demand analysis again. So the recommendations will come forward that I discussed a moment ago at the February eleventh budget meeting regarding the rate increases. I will be able to provide sample calculations at that time. It'll be, it won't be a straight across increase in terms of percentages because we are implementing the change in quarter two of two thousand and twenty one. And then we will be seeking authorization to prepare amendment bylaws recommending adoption prior to March thirty first, so we can implement those in quarter one, which begins April one of two thousand and twenty one. So our communications on this will include continuing to get the information out during budget consultations, which will continue into February. And then our utility billing for quarter one will have information regarding these rate changes, should they be approved by council. And that would be three months prior to to the quarter two billings billings going out. And then we will certainly use our social media channels to get the information out as well. So that concludes my presentation and I'll just stop sharing my screen. All three of us, I believe, are available to answer any questions council may have.
I love the way Nyla always smiles when she's delivering increases. Are there any questions for Nyla or anybody else, counsel Anderson?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I was a little confused. At one point, I heard that the surpluses from two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty would be going into reserves. And then another point I heard did be going to operations for two thousand and twenty? Or or what was that?
Sure, I yeah, I can speak to that. So previously, we 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 would take the surpluses and we would transfer them into the capital reserve fund, which restricts those funds for capital only in the future. And what we have been finding in more recent years is that we are, we haven't had the ability to balance the the water in the sewer fund for operational and planning requirements. So we require those funds to be more flexible. So what we we would like to do is just bring those surpluses forward into operating and have the flexibility we require to offer the utility and use them in the in the next year's annual budget. And that will mean that some items that we had planned to to occur in the previous year didn't occur. And then we'll just bring them forward into the next year and and use those funds and carry them forward, similar to how we reassign taxes from one year to the next.
Okay. The other question I had. There we're looking at a thirteen percent increase for two thousand and twenty one and then four percent and then down to two later on. I'm just wondering why we're loading that at the front end so much and why not maybe a whatever, an eight, six, and then four or something like that?
Yeah, so we have, our last rate review was in two thousand and fifteen. We implemented a rate structure that did not have a regular annual increase. We knew we needed to spend some time having a look at our operating, planning requirements, future renewal, capital renewal requirements and and not arbitrarily increase rates from year to year without requiring those funds. We're at a place now where we've had a significant review of our system and Fraser, I'll pass it over to you in a moment to speak to that if you'd like. And we we feel very confident coming forward with our revenue requirements. So if we break down over the last five years, if we were to have a regular rate increase, we're looking at breaking down that thirteen percent over five years at about two point six percent per year that we didn't increase fees for. Now, plain and simple, we are having a look at our operating requirements. We're having trouble balancing the funds. We know what our revenue requirements are and we're coming forward with this with this rate increase that we we know we need to to front end load and also make up for lost time and then move forward with an adequate increase to to meet the requirements that JP had showed in the model.
Just one last point on that. Do do those surpluses that we're carrying forward decrease that that in increase?
Yeah. So if we have the ability to bring that amount forward, then we have the ability to to increase those fees less in the in the year to meet our our revenue requirements, most definitely.
Thanks.
Okay, Councilor Stair.
Thank you, Nyla. I have, I think I'll answer or you answered the questions that our councillor Anderson brought forward in terms of that spike in that thirteen percent area. So thank you. In in a more generalized conversation, you you spoke earlier about you're you're comfortable with the current rate structure, which is billing based on demand. And I guess in a more generalized question is, are you, you know, we are going to have that rate review in two thousand and twenty two. Are you still comfortable with that approach billing based on demand? And I know you were looking at that flat fee and wanting to increase that, probably increase that percentage of a more reliable revenue source. But is that is that thinking still in a generalized way based on that billing based on demand with an with sort of an increase in in that structured flat fee?
Yeah, we would, there would be a threshold to that flat fee. We have, if we wanted to continue to build purely based on on demand and and whether it's exactly equal to demand or not, for whatever reasons. And I would look to Fraser for the technical thoughts on that. We would ensure that that flat fee doesn't sort of cross over that threshold where where then we lose that that objective in in the model. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Yeah, it just, it's more of that larger philosophical approach to it. And I did have just a quick one, maybe Fraser might be able to answer that. I just was noting that last year's total consumption was four hundred and fifteen thousand cubic meters. Do you know if that's consistent with past year's consumption rates or are we are we looking at any variations over the last few years in that consumption rate?
Through the through the mayor. If I don't have the models or the our sort of monthly totals and weekly consumption in front of me. But I think one of some of the interesting stuff that we saw in two thousand and twenty was that even with the lockdowns that occurred at the different parts of the year, we were still actually using about the same amount of water. So we had, we had those quiet periods with a lower intensity, but then we had these very, very busy, more intense periods. So we are tracking that and as part of the the planning presentations that are to come are going to include that deeper dive into consumption, rates of consumption and where that consumption is occurring. Just so that we really understand how we can address those through both rate structures, conservation programs and investments in the utility. So the seasonality question that Nyla had talked about can only really be recommended as a future approach when we have that sort of understanding on lock.
Yeah, and that that's exactly the kind of thinking I was thinking when asking the question. And then, actually, I'll I'll leave it at, leave it at there. The only thing maybe was was more generalized again, it was more on the on the communication aspect. And as we're learning, the more clear we are in articulate with why, for example, we might have a thirteen percent of rate increase or a or whatever it is, for whatever reasons that we're very clearly articulating in our communication with with the with the community of why those increases are there and very clearly. And I'm sure we all know that. I just wanted to reiterate how important that has been in the past. Thank you. Thank you all for your for your presentations today.
Counselor Chalmers.
Now that in through actually a few reports, but the potential borrowing for the larger projects that we have coming up over the next, I think, getting closer into two thousand and twenty five. But would that put us with a wastewater treatment plant, couple those two borrowings together? Would that be pretty close to our threshold? Or is this a bit early to ask that question?
It's a, it's a good question. It's it's early to ask that question. So we've, we've worked in some debt servicing into the model because we we very much will will rely on some debt servicing as part of our our asset management planning and our our investment plan that I did bring forward to council. I, of course, it's it's my preference not to heavily rely on debt servicing. And as JP mentioned, we didn't work a lot of of grants into the model. So as we see grant opportunities come up, my expectation is to see that debt servicing come down. So to to get some numbers into the model and have a visual for planning purposes at a staffing level and and something to have a conversation about, we work some debt servicing into the model. So our our limits will change year after year as our revenue amounts change because it is based on that. And as we pay pay down the debt servicing on wastewater, then it gives us a bit more room when we're borrowing. So a long answer, but but yes, it is.
That helps. Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Now, I'm glad you're considering a rate review. I mean, notionally, I would like to see the effect of, say, doubling the flat fee and making and seeing how much the rates would have to go up then. Because I think that really helps in the fixed costs. And then secondly, I mean, I know this borrowing is probably tied to projects. And I don't have a crystal ball for interest rates, but I would suspect they're going to be a lot higher in two thousand and thirty than they are in two thousand and twenty five. And I just wondered whether we should be trying to even out the amounts that we borrow or else borrow more in twenty five than we're doing thirty.
Yes, yes, that's, yeah, definitely something that that is on my mind. And and we will be, we'll be making borrowing decisions very carefully and slowly, similar to how we are with a wastewater treatment plant, making decisions on on when to lock in based on when we're borrowing and how quickly we're borrowing. So yeah, like you, I don't have a crystal ball either, but I definitely do incorporate that into our into our decision making and our planning.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions? Seeing none, I'd just like to thank JP and Fraser and Nyla for a daunting presentation. And we look forward to the next round. Are you going to send this PowerPoint presentation out to members of council?
Yes, we will.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Moving on. The next thing is a report on our favorite subject of beach fires. And I presume we're going over to Mr. Baker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope everyone's doing well. So yeah, we are going to get into two thousand and twenty one beach fire management plan. And I do have a slide presentation, so I'll just take a moment here and share my screen. Okay, so we should be seeing two thousand and twenty one District of Fino Beach Fire Management. Wonderful. Thank you for the thumbs up. Okay, so just to begin with a little bit of background, at the council meeting in October thirteenth, council resolved that staff be directed to bring forward options to address the health, environmental and safety related issues to beach fires for consideration prior to the two thousand and twenty one summer season. The primary issues that have been addressed are burning of driftwood, excessive numbers of fires, excessive smoke, garbage and safety. And I'd like to just go through some of the existing challenges. So we have five public beaches spread out over several kilometers. Typically, in the evenings for the summer months, we're resourced with two enforcement staff, which includes one by law officer and one RCMP reservist. These same two enforcement staff focus on beaches and all other evening priorities, including illegal camping, noise and anything else that gets called in during that shift. Evening beach activity often includes large groups and and alcohol, which increases the safety concerns for staff. We have inconsistent, confusing signage at the public access to the beaches and a lack or ineffective signage to the private access to the beaches. So I just wanted to walk through some of the signage that's out there and and sort of and where these various locations are. So I know it's a little bit small to read them, but several of our locations, we have these sort of green block printed signs that address some of the campfire regulations as well as a number of other regulatory issues. At Mackenzie Beach, the one issue we have is the sign, it's it's hard to read. There's a lot of information on there. But it's actually not even close to any public access. It's actually about fifty meters from the corner in the road before you get into the Bella Pacifica parking lot. So it's not in a place where anybody's going to slow down to stop and read it before they park their car. Hellison Road, we've got, again, the green signage right before you access the walkway out to the beach. And then the smaller black sign that we had created last year that goes through the campfire regulations. At fourteen thirty one, the public lot at Cox Beach, you can see on the left there, there's just a white sign that says beach fires prohibited. But again, it's not anywhere close to where the trail actually is. So there's a good chance that people are not even going to be taking note of that as they pass towards the much more colorful signage towards the trail there. If you look at Chesterman, each of the main access points on Chesterman, they have the the large bulletin board style of signage. There's regulatory signs, but we're often competing with garage sales, missing pets, items for sale, those sorts of things. So our information that we need to get to the public doesn't stand out from those things. Also at North Testament, again, we do have the the black regulatory sign with the provincial requirements. At South Testament, we have both the green block printed sign and the the regulatory sign. I want to look at the private access signage as well, too, because we get asked the question all the time, are, is everybody doing enough to to help solve this issue? So when you look at Ocean Village Resort and Crystal Cove, not a single sign indicating anything related to beach fires can be found on either of those properties. Middle Beach Lodge, Bella Pacifica Campground, same thing with all the access points that they have along there. There's not a single sign that indicates anything around beach fires. Long Beach Lodge, Mackenzie Beach Resort, Tin West Resort, not a single sign anywhere. Cox Bay Beach Resort does not have any signs. And of all the properties on all the the private access areas, the only two businesses that currently have any signs is Pacific Sands Beach Resort. They've got about seven or eight access points to the beach. All but one of them has, it's hard to see in the photo, but it's just a small brown sign with a white flame and a red line through it. There's no wording or anything. The image is good, but it's very small and it's mixed amongst another number of other signs. Surf Grove Campground, I think they've taken the best approach. They wanted to make sure they captured people's attention. They have a standalone sign right as you access the beach. It's about three feet tall and two feet wide. Very clear picture picture on there. And then the wording is very simple, beach fire is not permitted. And that also indicates the potential fine amount ranging from fifty dollars to three hundred dollars. So council asked me to bring forward a number of options to consider. And so starting out with number one, we've got signage. So looking at overhauling all of the public signage messages that are clear, concise, consistent and highly visible. Sign templates perhaps could be made available for the resorts to use. When possible, having consistent signs at both the public access and the private access is always going to be beneficial. And then trying to eliminate possible confusion from the beachgoers. So making sure that the language is simple and minimal. And whenever possible, using pictographs. So the image that I've got here on this one caring for your coast, first of all, I think it's actually a positive message as opposed to just prohibitions. But then there's a number of icons that indicate all the different regulatory issues. These signs are all up and down the California coast. I've seen them personally when visiting out that way. And they're often found mounted actually right out on the beaches. And the ones that I've seen have been about six feet tall and about eight feet wide. And they actually have garbage cans right beside, but everybody is very clear on the rules because it's very simple to understand. Much less of a language barrier as well, too. Option number two was a full or seasonal ban. So if we look at a year round ban, we received a fair amount of feedback discussing this this possible option. It was very mixed. Many communicate, community members indicate that beach fires have been a longstanding family tradition. They're a great way to get outdoors during the current COVID nineteen pandemic. It's something that can be done in a safe and responsible manner. A year round prohibition would reduce the overall numbers of fires, yet it leaves very little options for those that are attempting to have a safe and responsible experience outdoors. If we looked at the seasonal ban, that would limit the number of fires during the peak season and it would permit the activity in the off season. With this option consideration really should be given to the venting index during that time of year. Fires would likely be fewer, but it may impact Fires would likely be fewer, but it may impact the air quality at a time when the smoke is more likely to linger in the atmosphere. Option number three has been discussed by a number of people. So a permit system. This can be implemented in a number of ways, either with limited number of permits or unlimited number of permits. All those that would be considering having a fire in a public location would apply for a permit. And that application process gives the opportunity for some fire education and awareness. The process can be very administratively challenging. A small fee for each permit would offset the administrative costs. Possibly generate additional funds that could be used towards enforcement, beach cleanup and education. This option would likely reduce the number of overall fires each night and reduce the environmental and health impacts by reducing the amount of smoke in general. But there are considerable logistic issues to be taken into consideration. In order to make the management of the system successful, how many permits, who sells them, what's the cost? Did can they be purchased in advance or just the day of? There's really a lot to to think about with that. Option four is portable outdoor fire pits or appliances. So when we look at this option, there are. Lots of variables out there that are available in the portable outdoor pits. Propane fired units that can be gathered around or for cooking. To sophisticated wood burning units that burn small pieces of wood at high temperatures in order to burn clean for the environment. This option would definitely limit the number of fires as not everyone's going to want to go out and purchase an appliance to have their fire. And it would have the added bonus of greatly reducing the overall smoke that's generated. Option number five would be to increase the fines. So when you look at the table here, the fines that are listed. These are the ones that. These occurrences are happening every night and sometimes dozens of dozens of times a night. And there's not always fines issued, but but overall people need to be more aware of what the fines are and there needs to be a bigger deterrent. So. For a fire greater than five meters in diameter, it's $50. Fire after 11pm, $50. Failure to supervise fire, $100. Covering fire creating hazard is $100. Inadequate supply of water, which is just about every fire on the beach every night, $100. Burning of beach material for $100 and failure to extinguish the fire for $200. We have the opportunity to increase these fines for bylaw notices significantly, which may act as a greater deterrent. And posting the amounts on our signs will increase the overall awareness. Option six, increased enforcement. With new businesses that have opened in the Cox Beach area, evening beach use has increased substantially, especially during COVID-19. Managing five municipal beaches spread out over five kilometers with two staff has become very logistically challenging. Adding an additional RCMP reservist and one additional summer bylaw enforcement officer to assist in evening patrols. Will offer broader, more consistent coverage, increase presence when needed and create safer conditions for the staff overall. So the this option for increasing the enforcement capability that has been into the 2021 financial plan as well, too. The last one, reducing the hours of burning. So each night, there are dozens of fires that are abandoned without being extinguished. Bylaw staff often spend extra time or overtime extinguishing all of these abandoned fires. The District of Tofino Outdoor Burning Bylaw does allow campfires on the beach until 11pm. But reducing the allowable hours to 10pm would mean that staff could complete most of their work in the data daylight hours, which is safer. Additional cleanup may still be completed before requiring overtime past midnight. So I've sort of compiled everything into this table here. So across the top, we have the the concerns that have been raised. And then on the left hand column, we've got the options which I just presented. So if we look at improving the signage. It's likely going to reduce the number of fires just because of information getting out to people. Less fires means less smoke, likely less driftwood burning. Not sure how that would affect the garbage, but when people are informed, it's a safer environment overall. Having a full or partial ban definitely going to reduce the number of fires and the amount of smoke. Likely going to reduce the amount of driftwood as well. Garbage will go along with that also. But because it doesn't give community or visitors an option. This increases the potential for conflict, so it doesn't necessarily address the safety. A permit system going to reduce the number of fires, smoke and possibly burning of driftwood and garbage. But again, with minimal options for people, it's not necessarily going to change the safety aspect. Portable fire pits will reduce the number of fires, reduce the amount of smoke, reduce the burning of driftwood. And with all of those, there's going to be less garbage, but because it's a relatively affordable option where people can still get out and meet that goal. It's going to improve the safety as well. Increasing the fines. Again, this comes with increased awareness. It's going to hit all of these marks as well. Increased enforcement enforcement, same thing. There's more opportunity to provide education and information out there and it's going to hit all the points. Reduced hours of burning. This one on its own is not going to make a huge amount of difference. But the fact that fires would be limited by one additional hour will reduce the amount of smoke. And just the fact that working more through the daylight hours is going to increase the safety as well. I feel that it's pretty clear that no one option is going to going to fix everything. So in my recommendations, I've put together five of them that I think. Working together have the chance to make a real difference. So number one, that staff be directed to amend the outdoor burning regulations to allow only to use a portable outdoor fire pits or appliances. In place of wood burning beach fires on public property by summer 2021. Two, that staff be directed to increase the fines for beachfire infractions by summer 2021. Three, that staff be directed to reduce the hours permitted for outdoor burning on public property by summer 2021. Four, that staff be directed to increase and improve the public signage related to beach fires by summer. And five, that staff be directed to increase the bylaw enforcement resources directed to beachfire regulations. That's the last of my slides that I have for you, and I'm sure there's going to be a number of questions on this hot topic. So I will stop sharing my screen right now and. See who's got the first question.
Yeah, I can see council is salivating here. So we'll see who wants to go first. Counselor Anderson.
Hi, thanks for your report, Brett. I guess my first questions are just around the fine structure. It it seems a little bit low the way it is. And so in in support of adjusting that to help. Help pay for enforcement, but I'm just wondering how that fine structure has worked in the past. Have we issued very many fines? It seems like almost there's a lot of fires that could be fined. It seems like a lot of them would be over a point meter. In diameter. That's a pretty small fire, actually, like a foot and a half or under two feet anyways. So I'm just wondering how much that's already been used. Has it been effective at all? Are we just not able to collect on it? How do you identify who at the fire gets fined as each person? Yeah, can you speak to any of that? Just how well would the fine structure work and what what have we learned from experience?
Yeah, great questions. So from experience, we know that. Issuing somebody a fine for an infraction on a beach is much different than issuing a fine for somebody. In relations to a vehicle, say a parking parking issue, when it comes to something like parking, you are writing the fine to that vehicle. You don't have to get identification from anybody. It's simply a license plate, take some photos for evidence and the ticket can be issued. When you are on the beach, you actually, the fine is going to an individual. So you actually. Have to take the opportunity to get that individual's. Identification and and write the notice directly to them. So. This is an area that can be very tricky and our work with the RCMP reservist program over the last few years has certainly assisted with that. People are much more willing to provide their identification to an RCMP officer than they are to a bylaw officer. We still work primarily from the education and voluntary compliance standpoint is is always our goal. So. There's not as many fines that are actually issued. However. Making people aware of what the potential fines are is is, I think, more effective than necessarily writing the ticket itself. When you have 10 people gather around a fire and they hear that the fine is $50, it really doesn't make too much of the difference. Doesn't seem to make too much of a difference to a group. When they hear that the potential fine is is substantially higher. Then I think people start to make different decisions. And so. Having the fines increased, but also making that information much more available to the general public go hand in hand, I believe. Hopefully that answers the question or part of the questions.
Yep, thanks. Under the proposed recommendations, would Cox Bay still be a area where fires would completely be prohibited?
Well, it's definitely something to to think about. So. When you look at the propane fire pits, for instance, those are something that's generally allowed. Province wide, even during a fire ban. They're safer. You don't have to worry about sparks and that sort of thing. One of the primary reasons I believe that fires are not permitted on Cox Beach is because of access for the fire department. It can be quite challenging. So that is something that I would want to discuss a bit more. With the management team and that sort of thing, just to see what they feel. I feel as though it could very easily remain no fires on Cox Beach whatsoever. But it's something that that can be discussed.
Yeah, that's all I have for now.
Yeah, I think we'll just go around the table. So Council Chalmers.
Sure, I actually, I don't have any questions, but I do. I do want to say I really appreciate all the time and thought that's gone into it, Brent. I know there's been a lot of questions leading up to it and and the community feedback. And I think the five that you came up with are a really nice blend with each other and they're the ones that I would have picked out of that as well. So really supportive of it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Council Chalmers. Council Stair.
You're right, Chief Baker. This is a hot topic on a burning issue for the community. Yeah, I know, I know. That joke right.
Did you stay awake all night thinking that one?
I did, I did. I did want to. I did want to thank Chief Baker for a very thorough report and. And that the, you know, providing the historical context in our written report and and the background. In summarizing the community concerns. Was a great job and and also providing those options to address the the health, environmental and safety issues that were directed to. By council to to Chief Baker. And the report clearly and correctly states that no, no single tactic will solve all of the issues. And a combination of strategies will make substantial improvements to many of the many of the concerns. And and I do support for the five recommendations and and I and the fifth is not that I don't support, I just have questions. Around the the portable fire pits and and potential appliances and and the the questions really stems around. I think all of the ones that you brought forward are excellent compliance and the the probability for compliance is high on all of those. And and the one that struck me as potentially having the most. Could be problematic in terms of compliance, maybe the the portable fire pits in terms of the ability for. Residents as well as visitors to supply that particular instrument. I do understand that it would definitely. The numbers of fires would probably come down for sure. I just wanted to maybe a little more information or. To try to convince me that that this would be an important recommendation to move forward because I do see some issues. Around compliance. And I'm just thinking from your from the staffing perspective in terms of the buy in from from visitor and community. In this area.
Yeah. I think this is an important conversation to have. I. I think the portable fire pits have become much more commonplace. Being out and personally. Assisting with the the some some of the beachfire or the the beach patrols and that sort of thing. I see more and more of these, primarily the propane firings around. Because folks that are traveling here from other destinations to come camping. Are often expecting that there are fire bans and because historically we have enjoyed the the fog zone designation. People are often very surprised when they arrive here after they've traveled all the way across the province and not been allowed to have a campfire anywhere else. That it it is allowable here. So people have them in their vehicles and are bringing them along with them, expecting that this might be what is needed during the summer months in order to have a fire. So. They are more and more common. They're available all over the place in hardware stores and those sorts of things. So they're fairly easily accessible. I think from a resident perspective, that's where we'll have more pushback. But I think what's really important to remember is that we're not limiting how people can have a campfire on their own private property. We're simply talking about the areas in the public beaches. Where the sheer numbers of fires are excessive and the effects from those, the smoke, the alcohol, the garbage, the noise, everything that goes along with it. And so. I think we need to look at it from a position of trying the best that we can to be environmentally responsible and and making some different decisions. And I think the more we inform people about what the options are, then the easier it will be to actually rule this out with success.
Thank you. I I I I'll have to think about on that one a little further, maybe when it comes back up to council. I did have a question in that I'm hopefully be able to answer as well around. The air quality index and and if there's, what is the reality of of being able to tie such as a ban or seasonal ban? Based on those air quality indexes, as you, as everyone remembers from last summer, the amount of particulates from the fires south of us were were problematic in many ways. Do we have, is there the ability for a municipality to use something like an air quality index to to? To have a, in essence, a seasonal ban based on on those numbers? That was the one question. And I know like in Port Alberni, there's the, well, through the ACRD, there's the Air Quality Council, Diana Bodnar's involved. I don't know. I talked to her briefly about those air quality indexes and stuff, and I didn't know if you had any. Insight into if that is a reality for us and and it might help to also alleviate some of the more. Problematic issues of what a ban might ever look like.
Yeah, I think in some of the other areas. There's a couple of things involved. So District of Tofino does not allow the category to open open burning fires. And when you look at places like the Alberni Valley and the Comox Valley, where those types of fires are allowable based on venting index and those sorts of things. We're not talking about hundreds of fires every day. So to have those types of fires, a permit is often required. Which means you have to consult the venting index and those sorts of things. And so on an individual basis. It's much easier, I believe, to to manage that based on eventing index. When you're out here and you're talking about thousands of people and. Potentially 500 people are considering having a fire that night. Getting the day to day information to people about whether it's allowable or not could be extremely challenging. It's it. It's hard enough to, you know, get the message out about a seasonal ban, let alone today is good, tomorrow it's not. And because it does change so rapidly, especially with with the wind and everything that we get out here. So I think that would be really challenging.
Great. I I assumed I just didn't know if there was if there was anything out there. And I just had one final comment in it. Around the the communication aspect. And I think you read at the end of your report was a very big model there. I think this this will be key to to the success of of all of this. And you you mentioned a number of the of the potential community partners that may be involved. And I think this will be. Probably the most important aspect. And and you know, we can further have discussion about who those community partners might be keyed into. To have success moving forward. But I I think it should be top of mind. And and it should be top of mind in the sense that this this is going to be a year over year over year education process that is is not a one time shot, as I'm sure we know. But I think there are some key players within those community partners to ensure that with the highest highest probability of success for this. So. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Baker. I do really appreciate it. And. I'll let Duncan or Councilor McMaster have final word.
Okay. Let's see, I'm all in favor of a portable fire pits, but. I wonder what the. I wonder what the definition of a portable fire pit is. I mean, I have a stainless steel portable pipe, fire pit that collapses and you can burn wood and wood pellets. However, having been to Africa and especially Scotland, there's been a habit in the past of just taking half an oil drum down onto the beach and calling that affordable fire pit. And because it doesn't actually cost any money, it's just left there to rust and rot. And usually somebody cuts a foot on it or something like that. So I'd like to see that definition of a portable fire pit tightened up in some form or fashion. If we go that route. I'm in favor of reduced hours. My question on that was when I looked at the bylaw, you can have a fire starting as early as six A M. When I walk the beach with my dogs, the only people I see having a fire that early in the morning are people that are camping illegally. There may be the odd case of a surfer that delights one, but they're not usually up there at six A M. So I would like to see apart from bringing back the time till ten P M, I think we should push back the early start in the morning to whatever eight, nine. I I'm in favor of the increased signage. Does the WICN initially have a sign? I didn't see that in the presentation.
No, it's not in the presentation. They haven't got anything that's clear in those areas either. So.
Yeah, I didn't see one. I wondered, because I'm always talking about Chesterman. I know so many people at Chesterman in the vacation rentals and B and Bs just walk down the steps and light a fire. Is there anything you're thinking of doing to, you know, get those people to comply a little bit? Apart from just approaching the B and B.
Yeah. The one, the one strategy that I has, I've been sort of bouncing around is how to put it into the business license regulation by law. Perhaps for vacation rentals, having fire regulations posted in there. So I don't know exactly how that would work out yet. But, you know, in the same way that we were able to change our retail firewood regulations, so that the point of sale has to have the firewood or the beach fire regulations, I think there's potential for an option like that to go into vacation rentals as well as, as well as hotels. I think getting the accommodation providers onboard is is one of the most important pieces of all of this. There's far more access to the beach through private land than there is through our public access. And so.
Hey, that's good. Last thing, I'm in favor of increased bylaw enforcement, of course. My final comment is when do you expect to bring this back to council? Because I've always stressed that whatever we do, I'd like to see it in place by the summer.
I, my preference would be to have it in place prior to the arrival of the reservists, prior to the arrival of the summer bylaw staff. So as quickly as possible, after I have the time to gather my thoughts from from this meeting and and move forward. But I would love to have it by April.
Okay, Council Chalmers, you have a question?
Yes, Chief Baker, has there been any conversations with tourism to Tofino that they might be able to help with like some of the branding around the signage? I'm just thinking of the every drop of water accounts campaign that they did, that maybe there's some of the funding from that could help or work with it.
I haven't spoken with tourism to Tofino about this for a little while. The last time we chatted about it and trying to get some of this information into into their system and 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 their assistance was when they put out the Tofino etiquette guides. I can't remember the specific name about it. It didn't necessarily go far enough. As far as I'm concerned, it indicated that there are other regulations to be considered and go on to the website to look into it. I I would love to approach them about having signage right at the Tourism Tofino site because there's, there's nothing that's at that location, but they have a huge reach as well too. So I would definitely consider them a partner in this and want to work with them to to maximize the reach.
Great, thank you.
Council steer.
Yeah, I I is touching on the the communications aspect and the the other, there are several. And you've mentioned about the accommodation sector, of course, being paramount and and what you might be able to do in terms of business licensing. There's also some smaller ones with, through the chamber, there's the ambassador program that I know the Rainforest Education Society does the training for and having that that communication through there. And and there are several other of those community partners that I think will be, will be paramount. Is that, is that something? I don't know, that you need resources for Chief Baker to to identify or bring forward? Are you pretty comfortable with with the information you have and and what you can bring forward to some of those community partners?
I feel pretty comfortable with with the connections that I do have with the various community partners and and some pretty good working relationship. A lot of the accommodation providers do reach out and and ask for assistance in this program. And I've been very straightforward with, we need to do this together. So, you know, that's every, everybody, all hands on deck for this. So.
Counselor Anderson, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to speak to the signage a little bit. We, we have a signage about wildlife, we have signage about surfing etiquette, we have a lot of different types of signage, the directional signage and and then just some of the the regular beach signage. So I hope some signs can come down as we put more up because I think when you have a barrage of signs, as you go on the beach, they tend to all get ignored. So I'm hoping that you can coordinate with with April and her department and and sort of have a discussion around as much as we can to consolidate some of this signage. I think it could could be more effective. Also, I'm wondering if any of the signage, the expense of it can be paid through the R M D I program. So I'm I'm hoping there's some interdepartmental discussions on that one. And then I I I want to I I hope that this doesn't lead to sort of people that live right next to the beach setting up a permanent fire pit with a portable fire ring in it. There, there's there's, there's some sort of sense of of claiming that territory in front of properties when it's all public territory. So I hope that that the fire pit regulations are, it's that it's clear that you you can't set up one and just keep it there all summer. So those are my final comments, but I'm I'm in support of the recommendations. And I think going forward, we might need to sort of reassess how it works and and maybe look at that fire rings again at some point that are installed by the municipality or something like that. But I think this is it could work if if we get buy in and it's well communicated. So there it is.
Okay, if there's no further questions, would someone like to start moving the recommendations? Okay, I'll move them from the chair. I'll move that staff be directed to amend outdoor burning regulations to allow only the use of portable outdoor fire pits or appliances in place of wood burning beach fires on public property by summer twenty twenty one. Seconded by Council Chalmers. All those in favor?
I just had one, one quick comment in the discussion part, just to to when it does come back up to council. When we discuss this in terms of those recommendations, there there, we did ask Chief Baker to, I think, Counselor McMaster, for example, definition of portable fire pits, do we include that at this point in those recommendations? Or is that just understood, Chief Baker? And that it would come that when we do the next report that comes to council, that we'll have a discussion around or we'll have more definitive answers to the the questions that were posed.
Well, I'm hoping Chief Baker is being listening to us and taking notes. And he's going to actually pay attention and come back with some recommendations that we can vote on at council.
Great. Okay, thank you. I'm I'm ready to vote now.
Hey, all those in favor? Non opposed, motion carried. Next recommendation, that staff be directed to increase fines for beach firing fractions by summer twenty twenty one. Have a second, Council Chalmers, seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Non opposed, motion carried. Let staff be directed to reduce the hours permitted for outdoor burning of public property by summer twenty twenty one. Secondly, by Council Chalmers, any further discussion? All those in favor? Non opposed, motion carried. I always get nervous when council steers, shoulders twitch. Let staff be directed to increase and improve public signage related to beach fires by summer twenty twenty one to ensure that the regulations are clear, concise, consistent and highly visible. Secondly, by Council Chalmers. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Non opposed, motion carried. And finally, let staff be directed to increase bylaw enforcement resources directed to beach fire regulations. My second, Council Anderson. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Non opposed, motion carried. Well, that was painless. Okay, Elise, do we have any questions?
No, no one has signed up.
That's good. Okay, so we get a motion to adjourn. Council Chalmers, all those in favor? Non opposed. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Bye, guys.